Well, call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And perfect, let's call her out.
Pastor Monica.
Here.
Pastor Karen.
Present.
Pastor Brewer.
Present.
Pastor Bowen.
Here.
Treasurer, people.
Here.
Third Plague, President Supervisor Pleasure.
Here. Thank you, ma'am Perk. We have the agenda before us. Any additions or questions? If I'm motion to approve.
So moved.
But moved in, supported. Others in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will post a name. Motion carries. Um, public comments. And nobody in the public here. Uh, this evening, would you speak? Matt Bryan, do you have any big questions?
Just a couple of things, and those are supervisor and board members. Uh, first of all, I just want to welcome Lieutenant, uh, Preston back to, uh, act of duty. Also, uh, planning commission is meeting, uh, across the hall. Canal Club Apartments, which is right up here. So that's, uh, three hundred and fifty-four units. That's gonna be a nice, um, project, uh, moving forward. Um, uh, since we are meeting in this room, when we are adjourned, you can take a look. You have a nice view of the sheriff, uh, substation project, uh, from this, uh, from this room. So, uh, several of us like to come up here and occasionally watch when they're doing something, uh, cool, um.
When I came in earlier for a meeting, someone flagged me down. They said, I'm looking for the sheriff's department. It looks different across the screen.
Well, yeah, it's not there anymore.
You want to say, I'll go over there, go to the second floor.
You get a fair amount of.
Like a green, a rather green state.
It wasn't quite so big on that.
It's good.
I like it.
Yeah. You get a fair amount of people circling the parking lot. Not sure what to do. Um, as several of you might be aware, Eaton County has their financial stability groups. They're having a couple of public sessions coming up. Uh, I think the first one is March twentieth. From five PM to six thirty, and the next one is April seventeenth, five to six thirty. So that's just where they're gonna be talking about the, uh, financial condition of the county and, um, some of their plans moving forward. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, but that's all I have tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, yes?
Uh, Brian, there's training. I believe it's April seventeenth as well. Was it, I think you mentioned it at a board meeting. It's, um, like what to do in an emergency situation. I hadn't heard any more about that. Cause I wanted to attend that.
Yeah, I can. That's the active shooter.
Yes.
Right. I haven't seen a registration form yet.
It's, yeah.
Unless you did, I didn't get it.
I have it. I can send it out.
Yes, I'd like to.
Yeah, you can send it out, um, or access through, uh, emergency management. So it's a pretty easy registration. You can do it online. I think when Mary brought it to the group, they had to put out the registration. Yeah, so we'll send that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Uh, just on the canal club, I just wanted to point the board. I'm very pleased that staff is, uh, we're a flag that, uh, yeah, any easement that's conditional for the approval, that's like, you know, to extend the, um, east-west pathway. So all right to the, uh, the highway. So, uh, the, the owners were amenable to that, and that's great. So it's not something we have to, uh, fight them on or anything. They're more amenable to, to handling that. So that, that's good news. So I appreciate staff keeping an eye out and, uh, being able to include that. That's all I have. Questions from Brian?
Then the son there, are they putting the pathway in, or would be the township's responsibility?
Yeah, we're, we're just, we're just.
Having easement for it.
A-actually, they are, they are gonna, we are gonna try to have them put it in as part of the project.
Oh, I haven't heard that. Their staff didn't relay that to me, so.
Um, so it, it, as Dennis mentioned, it will be a, a nice extension to the east-west pathway that go north, uh, and connect up into, um, the pathway that was put in in front of, uh, Redwood and Second Face.
Great.
So there's a nice, uh, connection there.
Yes.
Still working right, just like this.
They, uh, it's, it's nice, at, at least at this point, in terms of working with the developers, as I understand it, Canal Club, which they have too. They've been very happy here at Delta, but, uh, it's nice working with folks and to view that as a, I mean, it really is a great amenity to their, um, departments to be connected into our premier pathway, so.
Well, Brian, if they're happy, the developers have to, but the township, it needs to get that writing, so.
Oh, yeah.
And I just clarification, you know, I'm looking right at a body cam. I just, uh, maybe you're a user.
Anything else for Brian? See that? Okay. And sir, are you here for a public comment? Would you like to, to come here, uh, to share something with the board? We went past public comment, but definitely would like to give you that opportunity.
I was just curious about, uh, St. Joe Highway. What's the latest? Uh, last time I was here, um, there wasn't a budget for it, and that was like, maybe four months ago. And I was just curious the updates. I know that you guys are going to do something this summer, and I was just curious about that.
Sure, yeah. Brian wanna give a quick update?
Sure. I'm going. Um, yeah, so that project right now is actually out to bid. So that'll be putting in, uh, water main from Waverly to Wright's, and then also a ten-foot shared use pathway. So, uh, board has approved, uh, kind of putting it out to bid, and then the bonding, um, documents that were necessary. Uh, so assuming bids come in roughly around our uh, budget, that should move forward this summer. So we will have, um, a lot more communication for, uh, the folks on St. Joe at that time.
Um, another thing, I just would, was thinking, I was on a trip coming back from Florida, and I saw a company called Buc-E's, and it's a big store, and I just thought, um, there are spots here in other township, I think, that could, um, maybe, um, go there. Um, or just think of other companies that are not here in Delta Township, that are, that, um, we don't happen to be in Michigan, but it would love to come here. And, um, like, we have our, um, fast food restaurant came here from Atlanta. Everybody likes it, you know, so, um, just, I would think, um, maybe leave or, or someone that, um, is willing to, um, put a letter out to different companies and say, hey, we're willing to listen to you to come here to Delta Township. That's all.
Sounds good. We'll have our economic development coordinator look into that. Thanks. Great. Well, we have one agenda item. It's the, uh, compensation review, which is required by the Charter of Township Act and our policy that takes place before the start of a new term, before the final deadline. So we have before us the recommendation that we remain, keep everything the same as it is right now. So our discussion tonight is, uh, do the folks want to go along with that recommendation or not? You know, Dennis had emailed out earlier some concerns about when you give increases by a percent that he felt was regressive to some. Now, we're not discussing tonight as far as an increase, what the proposal is to not increase it at all, but did you want to add, or say anything?
Yeah, I, I get it. And that's, that's essentially correct, uh, and, um, and I apologize to the board. I sent out the wrong table on, uh, I made some changes to it. Somehow it, it didn't attach the right one. So I'll resend that out again. And again, that was just for informational purposes. I want to show the principle of regressive.
Yeah.
Okay. I think people understand what that principle is. Um, and I know before us is just the, the policy, and the policy is basically, it states what our current salaries are in twenty twenty-four, and that's updated every year. And then if we were to change any other benefits, uh, there would be the time for us to do it for this board is in place, um, you know, make those changes actually before the election. But, y- you know, we have as a township board said, well, let's have that before us earlier rather than later on that sort of thing. So really what is before us is just that policy. But what I wanted to do is just alert the board that shortly after the election, November or usually December, usually November, but sometimes in December, comes, comes before us, our cost of living increases, CPI. And we as a practice have basically approved what the manager has recommended for staff. And we also included the board in that. And that's been going on for a number of years now, and, and justify it still. But as we do comparisons between Delta Township and other like townships, like Meridian, which I pointed out, there starts to become a skewing of salaries, um, in terms of what Meridian Township is paying their clerk and their supervisor, and what we're paying them. And right now, as we see in twenty twenty-four, the clerk makes ten thousand dollars more than the Meridian Township clerk. Meridian Township is a bigger township by twenty-five percent. It's like forty-four thousand residents. And likewise, you know, even the supervisor's salary is sixteen percent above, uh, the supervisor, uh, Meridian Township. Now, you could argue is that, well, they're Johnny Comings. You could argue that, which you could also argue is that, well, are we getting ahead of ourselves? And the compounding of this annual CPIs that we do every year starts to take that effect. And I just wanted to bring that issue before the board. We're not voting on that today. But we will be voting on that shortly in this coming November. You know, depending who's on the board at that time. Uh, and it might be as late as December, but the last number of years, that's when we've done that. So I didn't want a future discussion of this issue to come as a surprise. I just wanted to plant the seeds so people understand what the issue is, and can or should we continue on with that and have such a disparity between some individual board members in comparison to other like townships? So that is the only thing that I wanted to have discussed, and I wanted Mary to be, to hear it as well, so she could have some input in it. Mary, I hope you're doing better. I, you're here, so I suspect you are. So that's, that's why I asked for that delay than we have this, uh, committee of the whole meeting.
Mary?
Since you seem to be obsessed with Meridian, I would like to point out that there are significant differences between Delta Township Clerk's Office and Meridian Township Clerk's Office, which you can accept or not accept, quite frankly, but it's more for the benefit of everybody in the room. Um, there are a number of things that our office does that their office does not do. Um, they don't do the cemetery work we do. They don't collect payments. They don't schedule funerals or burials. Um, they don't do passports, which brings in over seventy thousand dollars to our, um, budget. Um, and for elections, we have four full-time, year-round staff. For elections, we add another one, sometimes one and a half. Meridian adds eleven people to their staff for elections. Seven full-time staff are added during election periods and four uptight. Our office does all of that work. Um, with the changes in, uh, constitutional law, everyone is now required to work a minimum of eighteen, eighteen straight days. Saturdays and Sundays, eighteen days. And we will do it for all three state and federal elections this year. So I don't, if you wanna, if you wanna criticize how I function, that's one thing, but please don't compare apples to oranges when you're doing it. Thank you.
And we never just base it on one comparison, one township. Anyway, we do a review, we look at a lot of things. We set it, and then, you know, there has been no increases in real value. It's only been cost of living increases to maintain the value that we set back in twenty sixteen.
Um, yeah, I just thought I'd share a couple of thoughts. Um, I know the decision is of how just can approving the policy on the cost of living increase, and I, I think that's one conversation, do we or not? Um, I know Dennis, with information you've shared, you've kind of raised concerns you have about whether or not that's regressive. I don't know what another more equitable, to me, like the same percentage share is what, I don't know any employer that does something different other than if it's truly individual merit-based, which we're not talking about something like that. I just, that's just naturally gonna occur. Those who have a higher salary are gonna see a bigger dollar per, I mean, that's just the way the numbers work. I don't know if I see that as inherently unfair. Um, one thing I do wanna say, and, um, you know, just in comparison, not looking at other communities, and, and I think that's helpful for us to always be gauging where we're at and bas- making sure we're not an outlier for the overly or under, you know, in compensation. I think we want to remain competitive, and that's important. Um, but I do think, um, and I'm not, I guess this is personal for Mary, but just in general for the clerk's position. You know, it, I think it's important to separate out roles in one, as the elected official, and all the responsibility just with our board work that's separate from the day job, what's done there, and you think about what the compensation for our supervisor position is, you know, treasurer, trustee. And I don't know, even if you take that out and then look at what the salary is just for the job that's being done, and again, as Mary, I think, has pointed out, even more so now, we have with our early voting and all the days, it is not, when you think about that, separating those two roles, because they are very unique compared to the rest of us on this board. The compensation for the amount of work and importance, so that work, to me, does not seem out of line. And, and I don't know if you were saying that, or you, it was more the how that changes with the percentage cost of living increases. But I think we run the risk of to me, that that isn't out of line because of that. I mean, even if it's twenty thousand dollars similar to the treasurer's, um, compensation, that's eighty thousand dollars for a job that demands a great deal of just time and the extra time with elections, but, um, competence and the, and the importance of running those elections and all the other duties. So I don't think that's like an exorbitant salary for a full-time position. That's beyond a nine-to-five role, and that's just my personal belief that, um, I, I just think we almost need to separate that out to really appreciate the level of compensation, because it's doing two big two purposes, both the board role and the daytime job. So I just shared that.
Thanks.
Well, uh, going along with what you're saying, perhaps that's something not for this discussion necessarily, because this is compensation policy, but perhaps that we should be looking into hiring more staff for your department and taking some of those more administrative things off your plate, so that you can focus your hours on, you know, the things that are statutorily important. If, you know, cemeteries are not something that you have to do statutorily, then maybe we should rearrange that and, you know, alleviate some of that in the future. That might be a, a future discussion, you know, apart from compensation, like you said, looking at, you know, your responsibilities as a member of the board, plus your responsibilities as the head of, of your office.
Other thoughts? Really?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just listening and, and learning, and I think what I was, I was listening to Dennis, and I, what I was trying to part out is if, and not that this will happen, because we don't want that to happen. If Mary were not in that position and someone walked in the door tomorrow, so their compensation would be at that level based on doing what work? The same exact work that Mary's been doing? Or would we look at what does the elected clerk position, what does that position receive? So that's what I'm trying to understand. Is that where you were going somewhere, Dennis, or am I taking it in a different direction?
Um, well, a couple of things to answer your question. Uh, once you establish the salary for any of them, you can't reduce it till another four years. Now, I don't know if there's a current law when there's a vacancy. I don't think that changes the outcome of that. And also, you could have a person theoretically of, uh, lesser experience, lesser credentials, take over the clerk, and you would still be required to pay the same amount. Now, according to what Andrea says, well, it's because of all these duties and everything, but Beth, you're right. I mean, it was a decision by a previous board that cemeteries ought to go, you know, to the clerk's office and other places. It's in the Parks and Rec Department, for example. Every clerk has had to deal with the burden of putting in place the changes of, what was it, proposal one? Every clerk and their staff had to do that.
Yes.
Okay. And I understand the added work of gearing up for that, and that's going to be continuing now that it's in place. And frankly, I'm in personal opinion that because of the extra work that the clerk's office leading the staff had to do to gear up for that is that, you know, they should be considered for maybe a one-time bonus. I mean, I'm open to that. But, you know, again, doing things that you, when you come into an elected job, you know what it is, and you wanna make improvements to it, and that's great, and that's not criticizing at all. That's just being observant. And if you want to do the, the service of providing passports, which is, I think, a great service, you know, kudos. And then sit around, turn, turn around and say, well, but I have all this added burden because of passports, and therefore I can serve a higher salary. I don't, I don't think it's apples apples. Or apples or oranges. I think this is apples, but notwithstanding that, to answer your question, um, there is a sustained, ongoing workload of every clerk in every township. And how do you compare unless you look at comparable townships?
It's the unfunded mandate coming in there.
And to your, and to your point, Andrea, I said, I only tried to show the, the issue of regressivity just to show that exists. I'm not saying we should predicate any decisions at all on that, because it's, how do you get your hands around that? It's like if we were to have a compensation commission, how are they gonna know any more than what we know and what we do and what we think is determined? To be fair, so I don't think a compensation commission makes any sense for Delta Township.
And to be honest, in most places that have one, they usually come back with recommendations that are higher than what the elected officials want to approve, so that they're rejected probably eighty percent of the time.
I think we should have a compensation. So, so we don't need to belabor the point. What I just wanted to do is just lay the issues out, so we're aware of them, because I, you know, I have, it, it's gonna cause me some real concern to sit around here if I'm back in December or late November and say, okay, have another three to five percent across the board again, and watch that app continue to grow. That's the reason why I brought it up.
Dennis, can I ask a question on that? Um, cause I think, I don't know, I guess, I, I don't think of, I, that's ne- never been, I've never even thought about inflationary increases. So is it is it that? Is it about the inflationary increases or the differences in compensation with the supervisor, clerk, treasurer, trustee, levels, that difference of com- compensation? Oh, sorry, I'm a.
Yeah, I, I won't interrupt.
Sorry.
Uh, you, you know, I just put together a table to show, you know, the phenomena of regressivity when you have ongoing compounding of straight percentages. Why we, you know, that's why the federal government has a graduated income tax. That's why in Michigan, even though we have a flat tax, a straight percentage, we have all kinds of tax breaks, you know, to, to reduce the regressivity. I'm just trying to show that that exists, that impact, the rate declines, and even though the base may increase. I'm just trying to show that from an economic point of view. To your point, yeah, I, you know, I, I think there is a difference when, when a larger township that's just across from the city of Lansing is paying substantially less for some board members than what we are. I mean, that's an issue that I have.
Okay. I, I didn't, I, it wasn't too, I, I feel like there are a couple of things, and, and I'm just trying to get, because I feel like there are a few different issues. I mean, there's one thing about our compensation compared to other communities. There's another thing about, um, our cost of living increases and the impact that has, that percentage increase has on higher versus lower salaries. And then there's issues about just the differences in compensation amongst the roles on our board, and I feel like a lot of these are getting interchanged at different times, and they feel like very different issues.
Well, they are different issues. I would say just dismiss the, the, uh, regressivity issue. I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, you know, so that was just, uh, an academic um, portrayal I wanted to bring to the board.
Okay.
Okay. But even though we're not talking about compensation today, you know, it will be, you know, forthcoming. And I just wanted to have the discussion so everybody was aware. And, and maybe we could have a, a more uh, civil discussion about it, um, when we have to come in and address that issue.
Well, I hope you weren't saying this wasn't simple. I just.
No, no, I mean, I mean to come in, yes, Andrew, your turn. No, I mean, to come in and, you know, well, why didn't you bring this up before? You know, now all of a sudden you have an issue. We haven't heard about this before, and I wanna do all of that. That's all.
Yeah.
So I, I'm fine with going in and improving the, the policy. I don't see any need to change any benefits that have been, uh, donated in the policy. That's, uh, I think it's fair as far as the benefit package, and all we're doing in the policy is just updating salaries at the standard.
Yep.
Yeah.
And so I'll keep that same for the next term. So we're within agreement, so we'll bring it back to the next meeting, and they can send agenda for approval of that. So may I have anything else for us?
I do.
Okay.
I wanna, um, just make you all aware that there's been a lot of discussion based on the constitutional amendment that passed in twenty-two regarding the extension of time for move ballots to be returned and the extension of signature cure time allowed to voters past election day, that it is, it's bumping up against, um, candidates. And there are jurisdictions who are installing candidates elected prior to canvas, and there was one instance when there was a recount and someone was installed that did not ultimately win the election. So there's been a lot of discussion in the past year. There are four bills proposed, county, township, city, and village. Um, the township, all of them will address that there will be no office, no one takes office prior to December first. So many cities and actually the state has, um, January one. So if you're January one, it doesn't matter. You can stay January one, but um, township law has township people take election, take office at noon on November twentieth. So this would vote, uh, so if there is gonna be one term um, of office where someone is going to go a few days longer before it comes, like, into play.
And that'd be for this year, so this year.
Um.
The term will begin December first.
Right, correct. And, um, MML and MTA have agreed to stay neutral on it, um, because they recognize there are some, it much less affects MML than it does MTA. But I just wanted to put it on your radar. It's, they've all four been, um, shared with us, and it's a very short bill. I'm happy to send you the township one if you wanna see it, but basically it just, that's what it's doing. It's establishing, because the governor's office really had pushed for a January one for everybody. And I said early on, that's gonna be a hard pill to swallow for townships. And I said early on, that's gonna be a hard pill to swallow for townships.
So we'll get eleven more days after.
So, yes, yes, so um.
We gotta work with Dennis eleven more days.
So that's, just know that it's, that it's coming and it's, doesn't have a bill number yet, it's been shared with all of the clerks. Um, and and, but I do hope it to have roots because of the problem that it creates now with Canvas.
Yeah, so Mary, a question on that, that'll, I'm assuming it passed quickly, so it takes place this year.
Yes.
What is that gonna require, I mean, is that just going to kind of trump our ordinance on that? So that, or it's probably in our charter, right?
We don't have a charter.
Oh, we don't, no.
Charter's still, no, we're all. State law, so that becomes the state law.
Charter, the charter.
Oh, so it's changing, and then for, but for then cities, do they have to actually change, or that just automatically?
They're they're, the state law, if their, if their city charter has them taking office before December first, this will trump.
It will, okay.
Their city charter.
Curious if this was gonna require all this action.
I haven't looked at this city one, but there are four bills, ones for each type of jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't really affect counties, because they take office January one. Um, a lot, most cities take office January one, Lansing takes office January one. The biggest, obviously, collection of jurisdictions impacted are to town, are townships. Yeah.
Okay.
So I just wanted to let you know, and it will be in effect, the intention is for it to be in effect. Because it it has to be addressed, they have a problem with the way it stands right now.
Yeah. Thank you.
I have one last little lighter, but for those of you who may be going to Capcom this week, I'm a mouse conference. I am participating on a panel for the advocacy three point O um session uh on Wednesday afternoon, so if you're there.
I'm coming to help.
That's what I was gonna say, come help me, I'll be there for that.
And I will be there, and I will be on a panel.
I'll be there.
What time is yours?
You know, I gotta look it up, so I gotta get prepared for it.
What's your handle?
Wednesday is the session planning.
It's like one thirty, yeah, it's the advocacy panel.
Ever have anything else? See enough for the business for us, or?